House present who wishes to record the meeting?
I would like to record it.
That's fine, Dick. While we're conducting town business using remote participation via Zoom, we ask that those of you not recognized by the chair or otherwise engaged in the discussion of the moment to please mute your microphone to avoid interruptions outside the conversation. Thank you. So our first item is minutes, but we do not have any at the work session. We will later on tonight at the seven o'clock meeting. So our next item for discussion is the speed limit assessment discussion on Old Salem Road. So Kevin, I'll turn this over to you and then I assume you're going to turn it to Chief.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Vermees. So this was an item which was brought to our attention actually through select member Gant, who identified this as a potential place of concern. We now have new processes in place for our traffic advisory committee to take something like this on. However, this being something of one of the select board members' interest and request, wanted to just in a work session, share this and provide an opportunity for Mr. Gant, if he'd like to provide any background to this before it's transitioned over to the traffic advisory for further review. Either, I don't know, Chief, if you want to maybe, if you have any input or Mr. Gant, if you wanted to say a few words on this one to frame it.
That's not right. I just want to make a point of correction that it's Salem Road. It's not Old Salem Road.
Okay.
So just as a...
We probably want to change that in the agenda if possible, just so not to confuse anybody if it's up on the town website or board docs.
So just... The background on this is that, in fact, this has been an open item for some time with Chief Evan Haglen. I got involved with it recently because the chief brought this up during a meeting and said he was working on Salem Road. So I gave him a call and said, oh, what's going on there? You know, we've done, we've had a number of requests in the past to get this thing resolved and to reduce the speed. There actually apparently was a petition that was done and was sent to the police chief, maybe five or six years ago, to please fix the speed limit on that site. So that's how I got involved again. I wasn't particularly bringing it up, except that the chief brought it up. But since, since this came up, I talked with the chief and I said, well, bring it to the board. I said, what we're at is the need to submit it to the state to request. The background includes the fact that one of the residents spoke with Brad Hill, who we knew personally. I remember the story was he talked with him at a wedding and he's since talked with him. Brad said, oh, it's all, it's all ready to go. We just, you just have to put your data in. And then we found out that, well, really wasn't all together. All the data wasn't in. What we really need is some device to get the speeds so that we can then do the data. So we went out and the highway and police department shared some of their budget. This is probably two years ago to go buy some equipment to do this, which we know about. We have the equipment that this spy camera and whatever else that tells us what the speeds are. But anyway, that's some of the background. Now, when the chief and I talked, I said, well, yeah, let's just get this done. If, if you're interested, because you brought it up at the meeting, let's just get it done. And he said, well, you know, I really should bring it up with the board if I'm going to submit something to the state. And I said, great, bring it up to the board at our next meeting, either the work session or our Monday session. So here we are talking about it at our work session, which turned out to be on Monday. And I think all that we're at is, the issue is, should we submit this to the state and request that the speed limit be set at a more reasonable speed than it is now, which is the state standard for a road that is not posted being 40 miles an hour? There's some other issues that go with this, by the way, that I was not aware of as much. And that is, but I could believe it's a problem. And that is Wenham Road, which is off Salem Road, is also a concern and has been a concern on the part of the chief for some time. And he's been running various speed patrols on it. And that one is posted at a lot less than 40 miles an hour. So I guess the question at hand in front of us is, do we want to ask the chief to go forward and put it up to the state with the data that's necessary about what this current speeds are and what the reasons are for our requesting the reduced speed on that street?
So maybe if Chief could give us that background, because I don't know what data was collected, what the current speed is, what's been happening on the street, other than speeding in general?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. So the, Mr. Gant and Kevin gave a good outline in preparation of this. So since Mr. Gant and I talked, I did some due diligence on the processes. I contacted a friend of mine through the Department of Transportation, who put me in touch with the chief engineer of the state of how this whole process would go. We do have current data on Salem Road, where we performed a speeds by for the week of September 4th to the September 11th. We collected data for one week of period of time. We documented 3,178 cars traveled down that road. And we also documented that about 15% of the motorists were traveling above that speed limit. So I contacted Mr. Gaffada from the state, talked to him today about the processes to get prepared for this evening, to see if the select board members wanted me to continue this, going in this direction. So one thing, they basically started off the meeting and said, you're probably not going to like what I have to say. I'm like, I'm willing to listen. I want you to understand the background. This is a country road that has over 3,000 cars being traveled on it in a week. Yes, by prima facie limitations, the non-posted road that has houses that are greater than 200 feet apart for a quarter of a mile of stretch, by default is 40 miles an hour. So I said, I want to make you aware of that, that the terrain on that road, the narrowness of that road, there's a business on that road that is seasonal, but I wanted him to make aware of that, that causes a very constricted way when they are selling Christmas trees for a three-week period of time. And also the construction of two additional houses on that roadway. I said, so taking everything into consideration, you know, based upon your experience, you know, is this something that you would entertain? He said, Neil, he says, we base everything on the 85th percentile. That means if you were to sit there and watch 100 cars, that 85th car, whatever speed they're going, that's the reasonable speed. So I'm like, so, so I said, well, is that formula ever going to change? He goes, absolutely not. So he directed me to this website and it's called the Massachusetts Amendments to the 2009 MUTCD website. And you go to section 10A-8 and it talks about speed control. There's six steps for us to follow that would take anywhere from six to nine months of period of time for the state to actually make a decision and for us to be able to post the speed. So I looked back at the data and he said, Neil, you have the data. That, that is current in their eyes, something that was done in September. And I looked at the data and the 85th percentile, because, because that's how the standards are. So this machine calculates that. The 85th percentile is 40 miles an hour. So we really, you know, we can go through the processes. We can actually write the letter. I would submit a letter to Mr. Paul Stedman. I think that Mr. Jackson has probably dealt with many times from the road commission. We would send him a letter and they would come back to me and say, okay, run your data. I would submit the data. They would say, great, you submitted your data, but we're going to verify it. So they're going to come out on some beautiful day when they have time and they're going to sit there all day and they're going to evaluate it. And they're going to sit there and say, yep, your data was correct or incorrect. And then they're going to send a letter back to us and then we're going to send a letter back to them. And then it's just going to go back and forth. And eventually it would go to the registry and be documented. And then nine months later, it could be longer, but a minimum of six months, we may get a speed reduction. But with our data that I have today, it is the 85th percentile is 40 miles an hour. Yes, cars are exceeding it. I think 40 miles an hour is too fast on that road, based upon the terrain and the downward slope. And we have proved that cars do exceed the speed limit, but it doesn't meet the state standards of 85 percentile. I'm more than happy to do whatever the wishes are of the board. I'm more than happy to be, one of this is the first project for the traffic advisory committee. But this does tie into Wenham Road, which we have a serious problem that 82% of the cars are traveling greater than the posted speed limit. Because what people don't realize, that after number 28 Wenham Road, it reduces down to around number 50 Wenham Road, it reduces to 20 miles an hour. So, and we have cars that actually see the first sign that says 30 and they continue on. So they're already going 10 miles an hour over the speed limit and then they accelerate beyond that all the way down to Sleepy Hollow. And then it goes back to 30 from Sleepy Hollow out to Banks's Corner. So my, my concern and one of the reasons I think Salem Road is going to be a concern is what we do in Wenham Road has a direct impact on maybe Salem Road. It may increase the volume of traffic on Salem Road, may increase the volume of trucks on Salem Road. So again, we have to look at everything totally objectively. Take a look at everything of how it's going to impact the neighbors, how it's going to impact the residents on those two streets or even on Sleepy Hollow or on High Street. So again, we want to be as comprehensive as possible. I know this is a long-winded presentation, but the bottom line is we did our due diligence to this point. I'm just looking for a direction, whether you want me to take this to the advisory, traffic advisory committee, or you want me to send a letter to Mr. Stedman.
Chief, have there been any accidents on Salem Road? Or are there a lot of residents complaining? Why is Salem Road come to the forefront if 85% are going the speed limit?
I think a lot of it is that we do get some complaints from the residents. There is no accidents that actually have, you know, sparked an interest for us to be out there. I think everybody is in agreement that 40 miles an hour on that road is fast, you know? And I think that that's why we're out there monitoring it. We would love to prove otherwise that it's something egregious. I just don't have the data that supports that right now.
One of the kind of plans that I had discussed with Chief Haglen, it wasn't necessarily a plan, but the strategy was to ensure that we did some very aggressive checking of speeds and then put the spy camera up. In other words, people know that we're there all the time and then we get it so that the speeds are more reasonable. This, this would take two minutes. I think it might be fun for us to watch a video that drives down this, almost, it's almost a mile. It's 0.9 miles. The first quarter mile or a little less is the distance from Route 1 to Wenham Road, which is a much better condition of road than the remaining portion, which is about three quarters of a mile. But if I think, it's a video, it goes very fast, two minutes. If, if everybody would live with me on that, I would be glad to share that screen with you.
Sure, Dick, that's fine with me.
Well, excuse me, may I interrupt here? You know, I, I think that all of us want to try to do the right thing. But I want to make sure that we're, we're not sending the police chief into a six-month program that costs a lot of time and, and, and money, in a sense. And I agree with you, Dick. Maybe the thing to do is just put some, well, what I'll call speed traps out there so that people get used to the fact that we're watching it and they know we're watching it. And when they get issued some speeding tickets, and I'm not sure that... Neil, I agree with you that 40 mile an hour on that street is too, too fast, but we got people that are exceeding that. And if we could eliminate that problem, then that might help, then that might help the overall problem. So speed traps is one good thing. And, and at that point, I'll shut up and go on from there.
Dick, does this show us the problems of the, on the street? What's the video about?
It just, it takes us a drive down the street, two minutes. I'd like you to observe what happens after we pass Wenham Road, what signs are there now as far as speed or not there or whatever, so you know what it is. And then notice most importantly, what happens when we enter Danvers. And you can tell when we enter Danvers because it has a double line down the center. And there's also a sign, of course, that says entering, or town line, rather, that indicates that we've moved from one to the other. So I think it's just interesting to see the whole thing. Let's see if we can make it work. Can you see that screen now?
No.
No, not yet.
Okay. Let's see, I thought you were sharing.
While you're working on that, Chief, can you, let me see if I understand this 85 percentile thing. Does that basically mean that 85% of the people are obeying the speed limit or under?
Now, the 85 percentile is, is a formula the state uses on if you had 100 cars, what the 85th car would, what their speed would.
Do you have that showing?
Yeah.
Yes?
Marshall, I agree with you. Chief, that doesn't sound like much of a, it doesn't sound like much of a bogey, in my opinion, because they're basing it on one car, happened to be the 85th car.
Exactly. I, I don't disagree with you, but that's what this... I know, again, in my search, there is a proposal to change that. And that's why I asked that question, is that formula ever going to change? And he said, absolutely not.
What we really ought to know is what 85% of those people are doing.
And the, and the data shows they're going 40.
I know Brad Hill needs to be careful, but he certainly indicated to this resident that he was ready to help once, once we submitted it, make sure he knows about it so that he can help us with it, for whatever that value is. Okay, let me try to run, run this. Can you see the...
Yep, yep, we can see it now.
This is running from Route 1. And we're running along here for the first quarter mile, as I said, until we get to Wenham.
Wenham Road.
Wenham Road, I'm sorry, it's Wenham Road.
Yep, yep.
And notice that there's a sign up on the right-hand side here. I can stop it so that you get a chance to see. And the sign says, reduce speed area. And then we continue on and there to the left is Wenham Road. And now we're going on what I consider the more difficult part of the road.
Well, it looks like it's, it looks like it's narrowed down a little bit.
Yes, it's under 18 feet wide at, at least some points. And notice we had the hill and then we are followed by some curves.
Need a little faster, 40.
Well, this, what speed do you think this car is going at?
I suspect 40.
30.
Whoa.
Actually, the average is 29 miles per hour. If you look at the distance and you look at the time it takes, and now we're passing Holiday Tree Farm.
Tell you, the way they parked there, along, along there at Christmas time, is they park on both sides of the road and it could be really hairy.
And so now we're approaching Danvers. And again, you'll know when we hit Danvers because you see that double line. And there's the sign for the change in towns. Notice right after that, what it says in right here, 30 miles an hour. Okay? So it's not as if this is not something that is out of, out of line. Danvers can do it, we should be able to do that. I thought it was worth actually seeing it, see what we're up against.
Yeah, I think it was. I get, I get...
Vice Chair, you're muted, you're actually on mute, just sorry.
Lynn, you're muted, here you go.
Sorry, I have the dogs in the background. Is the space between houses different at that point? The Danvers could do 30 miles per hour?
No. Well, they, they are somewhat closer, yes. Not, we are wide apart. They are somewhat closer, but you can see as I go down there that, that it's not, I do have, I mean, to the extent you want, I can bring up Oliver. We don't want to do all that deep.
That's okay.
You know, this is where the Clark School is, so there's a lot of open space right where that 30 is. You can see it off to the left-hand side. That doesn't mean that you can't, you can't achieve a quarter mile of that down a mile from there. But, and so, yep, the state will do various things.
I, 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 I don't really want to call this a goose chase, but Chief, if we sent you off on a goose chase like this, is it going to take you hours and hours and hours and hours and maybe accomplish nothing?
I don't think it's going to be that time-consuming, Mr. Jackson. I think that with the approval of the board, I would write a letter to Mr. Stedman requesting a, an assessment of that. I would, I already have the data done. They would accept my September 20th data. I would submit that. They would wait probably three, four months until a nice April day. And then they would come out and they would prove us right or wrong. And then they would, they would come back with their opinion. And then the Board of Selectmen, select board would accept it or not. And then whether there's an appeal process or not, or whether Representative Hill had to get involved, I don't know that political aspect of it. I, I just know that from talking to the powers-to-be at the state level, the state engineering office, and looking up that, the traffic control device, data sheet, and the six steps, we, we know what the process is. We know the timeline that it's going to take. And we know that we're already at the 85th percentile. So if they use their own formulas, nothing's going to change.
Chief, relative to other streets in town, is this a priority in the area of dangerous roads?
It's not a, it's not high on the list, but it is within the top 10.
And so is there a reason why we wouldn't pursue the other nine that are more dangerous than this one?
Yeah, but my number one priority is Wenham Road because of the speeds of cars. And also that is an extremely narrow road. And I'd want to, a recommendation that I would make to the traffic advisory committee was, is to reduce heavy trucks, anything greater than being consistent throughout the town, anything greater than 12,000 pounds. Therefore, it would push those vehicles onto Salem Road. And if we did anything else, restricted a way of Wenham Road, it would potentially push another 1,500, 2,000 cars onto Salem Road. So I think they tie into one another. I'd want to have an answer for the residents of Salem Road when we had a town, when we had a resident meeting, because there's going to be an impact. And I do, I drive Salem Road to and from work every day. I know how narrow it is. And when you get, during the winter time with the plowing, Mr. Gant's 18 feet goes down to 11 feet. So, and then also, you already saw the, the tree farm there with those cars parked there. And that actually, I was surprised when Mr. Gant showed that video. I'm like, well, that doesn't look as bad as it usually is, but that is, that is horrible. Like, there's been times I've had to send cruisers down there to actually have people put the cars further off to the side because we could not get a fire truck down there. It's a hazard. We do have no parking signs on one side of the street. We do enforce that. But again, it's a problem. I, I've always been passionate about Salem Road, and I do think it's a problem. I just don't think the state's going to agree with us.
If we attack the issues on Wenham Road, Chief, does that improve the chances that we could get something done on Salem? So if it moves 1,500 to 2,000 cars over to Salem Road, does that make our case better with the state?
Now, the, the state goes on that 85th percentile. They, they do not look at other factors. You know, by prima facie is the fact of that, you know, if they built 100 more houses on there, then, then we would be in, we might be able to knock it down to 30 because then the guidelines would be the houses are closer than 200 feet for that stretch of time. But I don't foresee that to happen either, so.
With more cars on that road, though, would it cause people to go slower because the traffic is just more congested and the road's narrower?
I think just what Mr. Gant demonstrated is that, that is a downhill terrain and the cars just, you know, come down there, they're going 30, they pick up speed going downhill. And, you know, they, they are, you know, when we ran the data, you know, we had, you know, there was 3,183 cars. 2,771 were compliant. They were going less than 40 miles an hour. We had 412 cars that were exceeding the speed limit, with the fastest car with one car going greater than 65 miles an hour, so. You know, so we, we have, I'm proud of the data and what the guys are doing. And we have a whole process. You know, we'll, I'll identify a problem with the street. I'll hear about it from the officers, I'll hear about it from the residents. So we'll go out there and we'll put up the speeds by, we'll verify the information. We put up the, the speed trailer to identify, let people know what they're traveling at. And then we go out there and enforce it. So it's almost like this whole educational process that we, we verify our data, we let the public know what they're doing, and then we go enforce it. And then we go back two weeks later or three weeks later and verify the data again to see if what our enforcement actions actually made a difference or not. And so, you know, everything that we do is, is a five, six-week process for streets, you know? Honestly, we take it seriously. Everybody knows how passionate I am about this. Probably driving everybody crazy with it, but I'm trying to make this a, the safest community that our residents can live in.
If, if you were to guess which would be a more effective use of your resources, yours and the department's resources, would pursuing a speed reduction or increased enforcement? And not kind of an either or, because it sounds like maybe, while I think it would be worthwhile to pursue the speed reduction, it sounds like that may very well not work. So might our ultimate answer be increased enforcement and just hopefully get people to slow down? Or might either work, for that matter?
The nice thing about our data is that it actually gives us the day of the week and the time of the day to have efficient, effective enforcement. So we are not just sticking people out there at 10 o'clock in the morning when the problem's at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. So we are continuously doing enforcement. Again, we have only two cruisers on. There's 118 streets that we want to try to meet the needs of all the, all the community stakeholders. And we are out there on Salem Road. You know, as you, as you heard, we're on Washington Street today. We were on North Street last week, camp meeting, doing truck enforcement the week before that. So again, we try to spread it around so we're more visible. Everybody knows that we got the grant approvals. We're going to be putting out 50 more initiatives. We got more equipment coming to have more initiatives taken. So I think we're going in the right direction. But again, it does take time and a little money.
Chief, one clarifying question, is that posted 40 miles an hour or is it default to 40 miles an hour?
It's a default, there's no posting.
So one of the things we talked about in the Warren article was the 25 mile per hour, unless otherwise posted. I'm not sure if the thick, the thickly settled would qualify for this area, but it's something we certainly can look at as part of the comprehensive conversation around reducing speed limits throughout the community, which we've had only one conversation to date, I understand that. But just want to make sure I mention that as something else that we've been talking about.
Right, and that's another thing that I brought to everyone's attention is that filing that, you know, 9017, 9017C to, to have a townwide, when it's not posted, it defaults to the 25, you know?
Could we just clarify that a second? Five years ago, that was available to us. It was available to us 15 years ago, whatever. So just let me, sorry, five years ago was available to us to post our town as being enforced wherever there is a thickly settled area. In other words, you say thickly settled town on all entries. And at that point, any road that is thickly settled, whether the driver can tell how close the houses are or not, it's 30 miles an hour. What they did with the, the act in 2016, which was referred to as the Modernization Act, is they allowed you to drop that from 30 to 25. So there's two totally separate things going on here. The availability of thickly settled and putting... The availability of thickly settled and putting that throughout the town has been on and available for a long time, but at 30 miles an hour. What happened, and you go to the by, bylaw or warrant, town meeting warrant is you can reduce it from 30 to 25. It decouples. You could do one or you could do both or you could, if you do one without the other, if you do the 25 without the other, there's a negative difference. You could do it at any point in time. But we should just be aware of what we're talking about.
And the other factor of the 25 is we can pick streets. We don't have to do it townwide. We can actually look at areas and make that area. So I, we, we could collectively come up with all the streets that aren't posted and make a list of those that are in thickly settled areas and then petition the state to do geographical areas within the town or street specific. Or you can do townwide. When I was talking to the engineer today, he does not recommend the townwide because he, his belief is that you have to post at every point of ingress into this town. You have to spend money for this huge sign that says, you know, this town has adopted this provision of the Modernization Act of 2016, and it's 25 miles an hour. So there's probably like 19 points of ingress that I came up with that we would need signage for. So, you know.
Chief, relative to.
By the way, I would not want the town to be posted that way. On the other hand, depending upon the extent to which we can, we're concerned about speeds on certain roads, there are a number of roads that are not going to qualify as being thickly settled. One of them being Salem Road. Also being Wenham Road is not thickly settled. So that doesn't play for all the roads that we're concerned about. It may play for some of them, but not for all.
Chief, do you see any downside in pursuing, because it's your time and effort to pursue this with the state? Do you see a downside in pursuing this for Salem Road?
I think the only downside is if they came back and said that it needs to be posted 40 and not going with a prima facie that it's a statue based upon the distance of the houses for a stretch of period of time. So if they came back and says, we, you know, you've been talking about this for a long time. It's, it's 40 miles an hour and we want it to be posted. I mean, it's, it's easier for us to educate people and say it's unreasonable to drive that fast on that road than it is to sit there and say they're violating it based upon the speed they're going.
So then we would be required to put up the signs saying 40 miles per hour? Or it would still be our choice?
If they came back and told us it had to be posted, I'm not sure they're going to do that. I think they're going to just come back and say, no, it's, it is what it is.
Especially because what he's going to do is submit a video similar to the one we just saw for the state to see that. And it will be helpful for Brad Hill to see that also and use that for part of his submission to the state. We need to get the process down, though, so we know what we're going to do for other roads. For example, Rowley Bridge Road might be one, and that's not thickly settled. So we ought to get that process down. And I think this is a great time to do it. But again, I would leave it up to the chief. If the chief doesn't have the time to do it, then let's not do it.
I always have time.
Then I would do it.
But it's, this is of the board.
Do you think it, it needs the more comprehensive look at those top 10? You mentioned this is in the top 10, but it's, you know, it sounds like it's 10, maybe or nine. Does this approach going towards the state to ask them for, for the ability to do this? Should it be done in a bigger look? Should we look at those top 10 and then decide what makes sense to go forward and push with the state or do it one Z, two Z? Or is this the only one that you would push with the state?
No, I, I think that, I mean, what I'm trying to do is develop a process and be consistent and not waste anyone's time and not keep on coming back to you, the whole board with individual streets. And I, I think that I, I would like to make a recommendation that we let the process take place. That let me have a meeting with the Traffic Advisory Committee, which one member of the Select Board, and I'm not sure who it is or who's been appointed, is going to sit on that committee along with the Fire Chief and the Highway Superintendent and the two residents from the community as well as the Town Administrator. And that we take a look at and allow the committee to hear my presentation, my concerns about these 10 streets, the impact it may have, and then have the committee make a recommendation and then come back to the board and say, this is our priority, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, we're going to work on this for the next three months, and then we go forward. If everyone wants to expedite this and put this one forward, I can write the letter tomorrow and submit the data. But again, it's the wishes of the board and the bottom line is, I mean, I would like to establish a procedure and a protocol and how we handle things. And I think we've done a good job and, and all the support that every member of the Select Board has given me and the Town Administrator. And I don't really want to deviate, so I'd like to let, let us do our job and come back to you with a, a total proposal and recommendation.
I like that, instead of just.
That's fine to do that. You are the one who brought up Salem Road at the meeting about two weeks ago. That's what brought this to light. I thought you were hot up doing this and I was supporting you on it. If you want to do this as a slow roll on, you know, having the whole thing, that's great with me. I, I would just close out this discussion right now and say, get the committee to do what it's supposed to do and then get back to us. If it, if it takes another two months before we decide whether to do Salem Road today or tomorrow, I don't care. It just seemed to me it made sense that if you were interested to get the paperwork started, if you wait.
Kevin, did you have some thoughts?
I was just going to think, this is the, since we've established a new Traffic Advisory Committee, this is one of the first roads that have come up in conversation since. And I think this has been a helpful conversation just to establish with all of us in the work session process. And so if it is the desire, as I feel it might be, I'm in complete agreement with the chief and Mr. Gant in that if this is referred back down to the Traffic Advisory as one of the first items they take up, Ave Road is another one, for example, I think that process makes a lot of sense for us to take. That's just my two cents in listening.
Yeah. I, I would, my temperature of the room is we're all in favor of that. By the way, do we know which one of us is on the Traffic Advisory yet? What's that? Do we know which one of us?
I'm, I'm not sure that we do.
Okay.
We have, we have interviews next week.
Oh, okay. Let me get my resume together.
Some of the best words I've heard in this conversation is the chief saying, I want to try to establish a process so that I know what we're going to do every time a street comes up with a question.
Yeah, no, I think it makes all the sense in the board.
And I think that that's, I think we ought to step back and let him do that in, in any way that he sees fit to establish that process. And the Traffic Advisor, I'm sorry.
I, I, I agree with you, board. I think we're all on the same page. We're coming to the same conclusion. Let the Advisory Committee do what they were formed to do and come back with a recommendation that's more holistic as opposed to one road at a time.
All right, then. Next.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks, chief.
We'll afford to hear your recommendations.
Appreciate, appreciate your efforts here, man.
Thank you. Happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you, you too.
Merry Christmas.
So our next item is fiscal year 2022 capital plan. I'll turn this to Kevin.
So yes, thank you for the opportunity. We, we were going to take this up at Thursday's work session, but we, we delayed on that due to the weather and due to limitations. But one of the things I presented at the last work session was the, the very raw first draft capital request, basically all the requests that came in when we had a call for request. Since then, been working with the department heads to go over each of the individual requests that came through. I've also worked with Catherine Gabriel in trying to identify the right types of funding mechanisms that we might be able to use to do as much as we can within the guidelines that are presented to us. So this afternoon, we put up on board docs a revised version two of the capital plan. It's still a draft. There's still some work that needs to happen to it. But I did want to provide the latest version for, for you folks to have and to, to take a look at. And if you'd like, I could just mention a couple of the things that we've done on here. Go through maybe some of the funding mechanisms. We're thinking that's outside of the free cash or free cash. Very, very quick.
Briefly, is it some way for us to know on this chart what has changed from the last time that we looked at it? Is it a certain color or?
No, I, I didn't, I didn't make any sort of, it's a great question and I apologize for any confusion this might have caused you all. Basically, what I did, I took the existing items. Some of them I moved into a fiscal year out. If it, if the department had agreed it could do so, you'd have to look at it side by side at this very moment. But I can look to provide you with some, a, a version of this that highlights any changes. But for the, no new, I could say this, no new items were added to the list. It was, it was just moving, getting better, understanding some of the numbers, understanding what the priorities were for each department in, for this year, and then identifying places where the money would go. So mostly, as you're looking at the fiscal 22 funding strategy for current budget, the right side is really where most of the updates came. There was a couple of changes in that one of the piece of equipment under Parks and Cemeteries, $70,000 for the replace the 1996 tractor. We moved out two years. Talking with Gary, there's a piece of equipment that we, that we can utilize right now. Or, and one of the new pieces that we'll maybe potentially purchasing could cover some of the needs of that piece of equipment if it were to fail. But mostly the right side is what the updates that, on that, and that's the specifics of how we would fund them. I will point out that above the water, which is the town, not the repair monies, but the, the, the revenue we receive outside the water. Currently, the total amount is, in free cash, is 334,500. We're still working to tweak that down to the $300,000 target number, which means potentially moving a couple of things. One of the ways we were able to get there is we're utilizing a previous ban premium, which was, is available to us, $73,313 for the town and $63,965,000 for the water, excuse me. Those are covering some of the costs currently in this budget. In addition to that, we are looking at a $30,000 Warren Article transfer as STM, split up between HVAC improvements at the highway, a DPW building, as well as a fire alarm panel under the library. So we were able to get that off of the free cash as well. One of the ones that we'll certainly have discussions with the FinCom on and with the Select Board through the processes, the police vehicle purchase. Right now, I've moved the police cruiser into raise and appropriate rather than the free cash. One of the things that we will be going over when we do the budget analysis is we're actually looking at the potential of a lease. And if by leasing, it doesn't make sense to build that into the operating budget rather than the capital. Obviously up for conversation in, in the will of the board and the FinCom on that. But it's something that wanted to explore that conversation with you folks at some point as well. Excuse me, I'm just going to get a quick bit of one. Because it's council on aging interviews all day, so my voice is a little raspy. But at any rate, again, this, I know this is something that you just received recently, so I don't expect you to have gone through it or have specific questions at this point. It, like I said, it's just really trying to help identify where some of the other funding is going to come. I will also point out under the Fire Department, there's $41,000 for HVAC. It was in there at $55,000 in the first version. We've got a better number at 41. And that 41 is in the other category. And we're anticipating green communities to cover the cost of that 41,000 through grants. So that's why it's, it's over in the other category for now.
So Kevin, at a high level, right now, it looks like 334,500 coming out of free cash. Did, that came down from what since the last time that we talked? What, I'm, I'm assuming the trajectory is going down, that we're getting closer to the 300?
We're heading in the right direction. Absolutely. I'll give you exact.
And then the other piece is just the raise and appropriate. What was that number before? Now it's 67,500. Did that go down or up?
Actually, sorry, my apologies. Let me just look something up real quick. The raise and appropriate, I moved the police cruiser into that. So that actually went up from the last time.
Okay, so that was zero before and it went in there now? And free cash before was probably up at, was that like 600,000? Because the funding sources hadn't been identified yet?
Yes. Sorry, I'm just trying to look up the version I sent to you folks.
That's okay. Just trying to get a handle on.
Yeah, no, I apologize. Yeah, I apologize for the comparison component of it. I just have to find that.
What are you looking for? The one that is on board docs or the one we had before, version one?
The first version I sent to you folks.
Oh, that, that's a PDF. Oh, yeah, okay. What, what do you want, what do you want with it? I, I have it up here. You want to bring it up on a screen or something?
Yeah, if you, if you could, Mr. Gant, that would be helpful. Thank you.
So it's a PDF and I'm going to bring up like the first page or something?
Yes.
Yeah, the totals that show what the total capital request was for the year and what the funding sources were.
I think it might have came from Debbie. That's why I think it was, she had sent that to you folks. So I don't have it in my, my inbox coming from you, so I'm trying to track it down now.
It could be maybe, Kevin, that that 64500, which is on the left-hand side, didn't change too much. What's changed really is the funding sources on the right-hand side?
That's correct. Yes. So for the most part, there's a couple of changes we made with the, with the 566.
You have the screen now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What do, what do you want, what do we want to do with that screen?
Total for the town?
Yeah, I think the next.
22. I think we scroll down. Uh, 746. I think it looked like 746,000.
Yeah, there's, there it is. So total town was, total capital request was 746,000 for this fiscal year initial request that came in. We've got that down to 645, 640,000.
Okay, so it's down about 100,000. Yep.
And then moving a couple of items within the budget to another year, like $70,000 went out. Another two, went out two years under Park and Cemetery, for example. Reduced the couple with some of the numbers, for instance, fire suppression. We're able to tighten that up just a hair as well. And then the, this, this, like I said, the funding strategy is what we're now including in, in what you have now that we've taken some time to identify where some of these can have, go in order to make, make them happen. And there'll be some additional work that takes place, obviously, over the next couple of weeks regarding this, and which, or next week, I should say, well, the next week, I'll, I'll get, we're going to make this tight so that we can get close to that 300,000 if we can.
Great.
Okay. Enough share?
Yes. Thanks, Dick.
So yeah, so I don't know if there's any questions at this point on the capital. And then we're, we're making progress, good progress, and just going through the prioritization and what have you.
I, I, I think it's, would be very helpful for us to talk about each of the items on that capital list. I'm, I'm ready to talk about some of them already, but maybe you want to get further. But we're at the point that it's ready to go, it's going to go to the FinCom. This is like the last meeting we have in December and it's going to FinCom pretty soon. So we should be talking about the individual items. Do we want to spend time now on it? Because we do have the, both the budget and our executive session coming. I'm wanting to talk about the individual items.
Kevin, when is this due to FinCom?
To our target date to distribute the capital and the omnibus budget is on January 7. And that's the FinCom into the Select Board, the first front, that'll be the first version of omnibus that will then take, that we as the Select Board and myself will review those items. We'll talk through. We'll talk through the select, um, all the items within that operating budget. Um. And get to a point where we we move that and then the FinCom will review it and make their recommendations as well. The capital that that we send out at that point will be hopefully a a good version that hits the guidelines that FinCom has. Um, so that they're comfortable with with the needs uh that are and the proposed projects. Like I said, the one that's kind of in flux that is the police cruiser and how we want to treat that. Um, this coming year. Um. Most of the other ones are pretty straightforward. Um, and I can certainly go through it. I've had the conversations with all the department heads last week during our budget meetings. Where I can provide some more detail on any of these items or questions you might have. Um, and if you have questions that I might not have the answer for, I can certainly find those out in in quick order for you.
Dick, did you want to raise then any concerns that you had or questions?
Uh, sure, if you run down through them. The sixty seven thousand five hundred is quite a bit for a cruiser. That's because?
Um, Chief Hubby, um. I know last year the car, I believe the cruiser that was projected out was fifty five thousand. And I know, oh, well, chief's here. I can actually turn it over to you, chief, if you want to comment on the uh on the cost of the of the police cruiser.
If we don't ask it now, it's gonna be asked at town meeting for sure, and the FinCom is also going to ask about it. Go ahead, go ahead, Neil.
The uh, the cost of the cruiser is about thirty six thousand dollars and there's a twenty thousand dollar uh conversion. Uh, to put in uh the push bar, all the emergency lighting, the sirens, uh, the cage uh for the detainee compartment. So there's a conversion of about twenty thousand dollars for that. That brings it up to a little over about fifty six, fifty seven, and then we have to buy additional equipment that goes in the in the cruiser uh that brings it up to the sixty seven thousand.
That additional equipment can't come from the existing cruiser that it's replacing?
Uh, no, because it's, we're still utilizing that that equipment, so it'd have to be new equipment for the new cruiser.
So that becomes the question, is this an additional cruiser to the number that we would normally have?
That's how it's being proposed as a additional, because it it doesn't make sense to get rid of a cruiser for, you know, the the what the price that we get in return and the shortage of cruisers that we already have.
Uh, I I, okay, I think that's a big question as to why we have a shortage of cruisers. We've had the same staff for some time. We know we need to do. I'm not sure I understand why we need an additional cruiser to what we have. How many cruisers do we have total right now without this one?
Uh, we have five Ma cruisers.
Five?
Yes.
Have we been under in the past, chief? Is this an ongoing problem or is this new that we're short one? You feel like we're under one?
All right, I I've always felt we're uh short. I know that I might be in the minority uh because of the fact that if we you know, what we're experiencing, and I know it's not gonna go on forever, is that when we have a detainee, uh, that cruiser comes out of service uh until we can get it clean. So there's been times we've been down two cruisers uh because of the transportation of a detainee. We also have, if we have to take that detainee to court, we're down a cruiser. If I have a cruiser on a detail, I'm down a cruiser. If I have a school resource officer, he takes a cruiser to the school. Um, so again, we're found ourselves in numerous situations where I've had to take my own personal car to court. Uh, I have the school resource officer taking his personal car to court. Uh, we we did Code for Vets, a uh, a uh campaign last week. I sent a cruiser to uh Foxborough and just last Thursday, I didn't have enough cruisers. I I had to have people using their own personal cars for police business. So uh I do believe we need one more in the fleet. Um, and that that's just because of my experience in being here for twenty twenty two years and seeing the number of times I've had to use my own private vehicle to go to training or to go to court or to send people to a variety of different events.
So is six in your mind the the number that you should have?
I think after this one, it's going to be always a replacement.
Okay.
So when you usually, when the people use their private vehicles, they certainly get reimbursed, right? At the standard rate, they are getting reimbursed.
Majority of the people do not put in for it. I have never put in uh for gas or a slip for mileage because it's just that, you know what? It's my job. And when the school resource officer takes his car to school, no, he does not get reimbursed.
Okay, um, we we need to talk with Kevin. We need to talk with you about that. That's not fair. It needs to be reimbursed. Uh, we do not need, we do not need a um a car with the flashing lights, et cetera, going to the court. Uh, they're not chasing cars as they go up to Lawrence or whatever the case may be. So the person, I I'm not sure that we want people to use their personal vehicles a lot, but I would say that if we did a cost benefit analysis, we very quickly find that paying people, we need to pay people for when they use their private vehicles for the job. Uh, but that was probably a better cost performance than buying an additional cruiser.
Uh, chief, when when you, historically, when we purchase a new cruiser, we just decommission uh one of the older ones in the fleet. Is that the typical standard currently? And when we decommissioned, that goes to um, we put it to disposition. We we put it out um on combines or what have you, and and somebody will purchase that vehicle privately typically.
And what happens is that we have the state bid list from MHQ where we buy the Ford vehicle from. Uh, that price is is a state bid number. Uh, we say we want to trade in the vehicle. Uh, they evaluate it and they give us two thousand twenty five hundred dollars for it. And then we take that vehicle to Adamson's. Uh, it costs us anywhere from six hundred to eight hundred dollars for them to cut out uh the wiring and make that conversion. And then the savings is that what what equipment we're taking uh from one vehicle to another and trying to make it retrofitted for the new two thousand twenties. So we did pick up a cruiser, uh, not last year uh or this year, uh, but a year ago, it was the first two thousand twenties. And uh, we, we didn't think the the cage uh was going to fit or the pushbars were going to fit. Uh, but they were able to retrofit them, so it's about thirty five hundred dollars of equipment um that uh we have to uh purchase in addition, even if we do a conversion.
So chief, I guess the net, the net net of that would be then if is uh the ongoing insurance costs of having that extra vehicle in the fleet, which, you know, grand scheme, that we have a lot of vehicles in the fleet, but um nonetheless, and then the second cost, the net effect is the cost of the radio equipment um as well, right? That's it's it's not being able to reuse it. So to have an extra vehicle in the fleet is that twenty thousand dollars you referenced earlier for the equipment component of it. Uh, that to to have that as part of it, that one additional piece of equipment into service.
I mean, as I look at it, I also say, you you know, Dick, to your point, could you, you know, reimburse these people for using it, but I also don't like the idea of even with the reimbursement, which sounds like it's an enormous pain in the butt to get uh and probably not worth the effort. Uh, I don't like the idea that we would require as part of the job, somebody use their personal vehicle. I wouldn't want to do it. I would say, listen, I'm doing work for the town. I'm doing work for the police force, and if you need me to travel from point A to point B, then you need to provide me a vehicle to do so. When I am working for the TV station, I'm doing so in a station vehicle. They're not gonna ask me to do it in my own vehicle, even with reimbursement. Uh, they could ask me, but I would think I would be within my rights to say no, and I would say that the chief's officers would be the same. So if if, you know, your answer is merely, we'll make everyone drive their own car when you need to and we'll pay them for it. I I don't see that as a sufficient enough answer. Sure, it might be more cost. It almost certainly would be a better cost benefit analysis, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's it's right in my mind.
I think, um, chief, when when the officer goes to the school to, you know, do that assignment, I would imagine that they also could be called upon if a situation were to arise where they would need a car with the equipment and the cage, et cetera. Um, they wouldn't be, you know, going after anyone or supporting another officer in their regular car. So it would probably be advantageous for them to be in a vehicle that could be used to assist other police officers or another situation if the situation arose.
What what is paramount about that, having the cruiser at the high school is the deterrent. These are somebody who sees a police car there for the whole day, they're gonna be less likely to take action. So not having her there, and then you make the really good second point is that they they cannot respond to an emergency. And they don't, even if something happened, you know, having a cruiser there, they could actually run out and get a patrol rifle or a less lethal shotgun or their tactical equipment that they would not have accessible to them. So I know it's a huge burden and I know it's a cost, but I think that it really outweighs uh the safety of everybody at the high school and the officer.
Yeah, I don't think there's any discussion about that. For example, my my example was that of going up to Lawrence or something for a court hearing of some sort. That that was my example. And certainly we don't require people to use their cars if they choose not to use their cars. But we have to be common sense. If we've got five vehicles now and you know how many offices we have, the percentage of times that you need an additional sixth vehicle for somebody to be this the school resource officer or whatever the case may be. Now, this this thing about cleansing, is this because of the COVID or is this under all circumstances you have to clean them and you had two that were dirty?
Now, this is one hundred percent COVID related.
Okay.
That uh I I don't feel safe putting a officer in there.
Absolutely, absolutely. So that's a short term thing. We're not gonna have this before the COVID's over. Okay.
Right. The other factor is that, you know, we have vehicles out of service uh for mechanical repairs. So you know, if I have a vehicle out of service for an extended uh period of time, then we're down to four cruisers, you know, then I have a school resource officer, two on. Sometimes we limit ourselves to our ability to do traffic enforcement uh and to do details based upon the fact that we don't have enough vehicles.
Okay, in my mind, we've talked about this enough. I'm not, we're not voting on anything at this point. But I I think we've talked about it enough. We have good inputs and I would go on to the next, so to speak.
Yeah, I I think that is justified and I I would support chief's request.
Yeah, I I mean, and and I guess we are, I I'm ready to move on after I just say like if Gary isn't here, but if Gary were here and he wanted something, I would say, well, we can make do with this tractor or that pickup truck or whatever. But when it comes to police and fire departments, I think we're talking about community safety and I'm I'm much less inclined to pinch every penny in that scenario.
Okay, any others, Dick?
The next item is is radios. Um. It's not clear to me. There's sixteen thousand dollars for radios. How much is, how many cars have we, are we able to do with sixteen thousand?
So that is to replace three radios.
Three radios, thank you.
Uh, primary, uh, and a lot of them, we have replaced a couple, uh, but again, uh, we have the vehicles that need all to be replaced, and that's why you see it spread out over a period of time. We have vehicles that go into a service mode that they're out of service. And uh, you know, if you want to get into the technical part of the encryption and digital versus analog, we are just not meeting the guidelines except for by the federal standards and the state standards of what we should have.
And so what are the requirements on the federal or state as far as when we need to be there? They want us to be there, but is there a timeframe when we need to be there?
I I I'd misspeak uh speak if I gave you a date, but I know it's some, I don't know if it's twenty five or before that. I do not know.
I I suspect it's twenty five because of this, the cap twenty five, the twenty five cap, rather.
That that's the only reason I mentioned twenty five is because.
I I I think that's, I think that's what it stands for. Um, so at any rate, uh. Th- this would get us uh three. And is that everything that we need or I I'm trying to figure out because here it says replacement of two radios in twenty three and twenty four. And then FY twenty two, it's just future budget impacts. Could you just give us a summary of where we are? How many, how many have it now? And how many, this we know is three, and how many more we have to do after that?
So we we have five vehicles plus two pickup trucks, uh, chief's car and the the captain's car. So we're looking at five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine radios.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I missed one of them. We've got cruisers, trucks, captain's vehicle, and what's the other one?
Chief's car.
Chiefs.
Chief's car. God, that's the most important one. Okay, okay, so there's nine.
I'll be the last one to get a radio.
And so while these all need to be in chief by twenty twenty five, you're doing it in a phased mode so that the the cost isn't hitting in all one year. It's being phased over the next X number of years.
Absolutely.
How many ha, how many have it so far? How many have radios so far? How many radios do we have so far?
I I believe there's only three.
Three. We get three this year. Means we need to get three more in the future years. Thank you. Now I understand that that that's the question. Great. Anybody else have questions on that?
Nope.
Nope.
Uh. The generator is the next item?
Yes.
Did you want to say anything particular about it? I have some comments. Okay, fine. So life expectancy normally for operating equipment is based on operating hours and sometimes cycles. It depends upon the thing and sometimes it's a combination of both. Um, it's commented that twenty years is the life of this. Uh, where where do we get that from? Uh, it it you, because you estimate X number of hours per week that we use it or something, or what's, how we come up with twenty?
I contacted the vendor SPE uh generator company that installed it uh the thirty years ago. They told me that the life expectancy of that generator is twenty years. Not necessarily because of the number of hours that are on it, is that we cannot get parts for that generator any longer. So if something fails on it, the likelihood of them finding replacement parts is zero to none. So that is, that's the concern. It's not about the fact of that it it doesn't work. It's not the fact about that um it there's a lot of hours on it. Uh, it does a self test and turns on every Tuesday morning at ten o'clock. We probably have power outages that it runs, I don't know, maybe ten, twelve times a year. Um, so there's not a lot of engine hours on it. I I I will consider that, but the bottom line is if it breaks, I probably can't fix it.
Thank you. Now I understand.
Dick, two questions on the remaining five. I'm just doing a time check here because we still have budget and executive session before the seven o'clock meeting.
Then we should move on.
Do you, do you have questions?
I wanted to talk about, we will, I understand. We will finish it all, and that's fine. I think we should.
If you had one or two, it's it's fine, but if you have questions on all five, I'm just looking at the time.
Five.
You've got five. Okay.
I mean, I I don't know. I got a number of them. I think we should move on. I really think we should move on. I understand the time.
Um, I would say, though, if you have particular questions, to get them to Kevin, because if he's talking with the department heads, we don't want to blindside him right before he has to finalize this this list.
Great, good.
Thank you all. Yeah, um.
We need to move on.
Okay, um, all right, then let's move to the twenty twenty two budget, Kevin?
Sure. Um, so I don't have anything yet to to submit to you folks for review. Um, what? I just wanted to provide you all with an update on how the progress is going on the budget. So this past week, met with every department head um for at least an hour or some went as long as three and a half hours um to go over their budgets and what they're foreseeing in the coming year. Um, teams have been working really hard, um, bringing all that information together. Um, and we have a number of new department heads too overseeing the budget for the first time. Chief being one of them, uh, Gary Wilds uh as well. So um, we're we're doing what we can to to support the team. Catherine Gabriel, I do want to say a thank you to her uh publicly for her efforts as well in being, in participating in each of those meetings. I think it's helpful for 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 everybody, uh, the department heads, Catherine, myself, to to make sure we're on the same page uh heading into the the final sprint before they're due. Um, I mentioned earlier, the final distrib, uh, the distribution will be on uh January seven of both the capital and the first omnibus. Um, the omnibus, though, from the department heads are due uh the twenty ninth, so next week, um, to Catherine and I. Uh, just some quick highlights of what we're we're seeing in the budget thus far. Um, chief, uh, I'll start with the police, uh, chief hubby, uh, and Catherine in the police department and Catherine Gabriel have been working uh very hard on understanding all the costs within the budget, all the line items and looking at the staffing model. understanding all the costs within the budget, all the line items and looking at the staffing model. Um, and how that existed previously, uh, where overtime was being booked. Um, and when the budget's submitted to you, you'll see a number of, um, changes within, um, the wages and salaries as well as the other category where they went back and looked at all the actuals that were charged to different accounts. Ones they felt might be better suited and other accounts made accounting adjustments for that, um, on their spreadsheet. And then are representing in the budget that you'll receive a very accurate and revised version of what the projected cost will be in 2000, um, in 20 fiscal 22. So I also mentioned earlier that we have, um, a placeholder in the capital budget for the police cruiser. There is a concept of, uh, beginning to look at leasing the police vehicles, um, as another way of um, providing vehicles to the police department on an ongoing basis. Um, and uh, we'll talk more about what that might look like when we get to the budget, uh, when the chief comes in to talk to you all about that as well. And then, um, also mentioned that the radios that have historically been in the capital, um, uh, on an annual basis of around $9,000, we've looked, we put that into the operating budget this year. Um, as it is a reoccurring cost and usually you're able to purchase, um, um, a, a, a number of radios within that dollar amount. So, um, as a regular ongoing cost to the police department, uh, we're looking to reallocate those radios into the budget, uh, at this time. Fire department budget, uh, same thing with turnout gear. We've typically gone to STM to have turnout gear, um, covered. They purchased three pieces of turnout or three full turnout gear, um, every year. Um, so it costs around $3,000. Um, that's historically been in the capital budget, um, and looking to move that into the operating budget. Um, again, this, uh, this year as well. And then the, you will see some, uh, slight increases on the ambulance service costs. Um, but that is a result of the exponential increase in revenues we're receiving from the ambulance services we're providing. Um, so although you won't see that in, in the fire department budget, those revenues, you'll only see the cost. The costs are, are a reflection of, of what we're seeing in, uh, the revenues. They're correlated by, um, with the contract that we have with the, um, collection company.
Kevin, are those revenues indicated in the budget somewhere that we can see how the numbers look?
Um, it, it'll be in the document that Catherine works with, uh, Mike Hartman on that shows, uh, the different revenue sources that build in. Um, so it won't be in the omnibus, the revenues, um, but they'll be in the, um, Catherine, you know, you're on the call, so correct me if I'm wrong on any of this. But my understanding is that it'll be on the pro forma that's created, uh, that Mike Hartman works on and that Catherine works on that represent the revenue sources that we do have, uh, coming in.
Okay. And Kevin, when are we seeing the budget, did you say? Did you give us a timeframe? Cause I know it's coming up soon and you have to present. So when would we get a copy of the budget?
Jan 7th, um, we'll be distributing that out to everybody.
To us. Okay.
Yeah.
Say it again, what day?
Uh, January 7th.
January 7th.
And what does it do to FinCom?
Uh, roughly the same time. We'll probably, we'll look at and send it out around the same time. We'll have a finished version for you folks to look at the first version. Um, FinCom will review it separate, similar to my, what I envisioned for this year is similar to what we did last year. So we'll send out the first version, the omnibus to, um, the select board and the FinCom. FinCom will do, will start their, um, uh, meetings with the department heads to discuss the budget. And at the same time, we'll bring in the department heads for a number of work sessions to go over the budget, uh, each department with you folks. At that point, um, we'll look and see if there's anything within that budget that the select board feels strongly we need to do something different with. Um, and if we do, um, we can make those adjustments and then we'll break, we'll submit a second version of the omnibus. Um, that's been reviewed by the select board to the FinCom, um, that they'll have an updated version to work off of as they go through above guidelines, um, et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
And, um, if there's anything, this is the first year I'm going from start to finish with the whole process. So if there's anything you'd like me to consider to do differently, um, then don't hesitate to let me know. Um, I'm, I'm, I feel good about the process, but I'm not wet to it in the sense that if there's something you want to suggest, by all means, um, want to make sure you folks feel the process is going well as well.
Ken, I don't know. Are you covering wage tonight? Are we continuing that discussion at all? Cause I know you had some follow-up discussion with the library folks.
Yes. Um, yes, that I was good. I had, um, it was one of my highlights that I was going to give you. I had a couple more. I was just going to touch real quickly on. If, is it okay to move on? I know Mr. Kent, you had.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Um, so just, uh, some tweaks in the health department that we're working on. Parks and cemetery. We're actually, we're taking a really deep dive on that now that, um, Gary Wilds, Superintendent Wilds is, is at the helm. Um, and we're, we're working through that. And then we're also going to do a couple of things from the town hall budget. One is reflect more accurate, accurate numbers related to utilities. There was a lot of question last year. There's some projections made, um, but this year we have some really good actuals that will help inform us on the utility side. We're also looking at the breakout costs, um, related to the website and the peg that's been combined over the years. We'll break that on two line items. We're also looking at on the technology costs, um, taking a couple of the items out of the general line item in top town hall. And actually put those costs directly into the operating budgets of the different departments that they support, uh, primarily. Uh, Cessar and Patriot Properties is an example, um, and, and things of that nature. So last thing I wanted to cover obviously was the wage grid with you folks. Um, and as y'all know, last week, uh, or last work session, I should say, we shared with you the, the two different concepts. The one from what we did last year and the concept of what the other possibility might be with, um, freezing the steps this year within, and provided cola. Um, shared with you some of the concerns I have with the existing model and, and as people get up towards the tail end of their, um, of the steps. Um, the impacts that have on people who are, are, are now not seeing a raise this year or not, and this year or last year, as well as we have a number of people that are getting very close to that 11th step anyway. And so, um, after getting feedback from you folks, I spoke with all the department heads at the last, last week's meeting, meetings I had on the, on the budget. I did have a chance to speak with the staff at the library as well, um, and informed them of, um, the, the conversation that we're looking at possibly doing something, uh, related to a freeze of the step, uh, with a cola associated with it. Um, and after having those conversations, if it's, if it's still the will of the board, um, we're prepared to move that forward, uh, the 2% cola, uh, freezing the grid. Um, however, again, if there's a conversation or a direction that the, the board would like us to consider, um, if it's different than that, we certainly can. But those are sort of the two things that we just, we absolutely discussed last session and, um, wanted to provide an update to you all.
And on that, on that subject, Kevin, uh, we'd ask that we replace the word cola with increase. Okay. That was brought up a couple of times last year, I think by every member of the board at that time. So if we could do that, I think it would be helpful.
Will do. We'll make sure the final version of that grid will say increase and not cola on it.
Any questions, anyone?
And we did agree that that was going to be 2%, did we not?
I think that's the number we talked about. I think that everyone was comfortable with.
And at the same time in parallel, there's something else going on, which is the more long-term approach to how we're going to deal with things, but that's all, that's separate right now. This is for this year.
That's right. We're talking about, yeah, we're talking about this year. Yep.
That's right. And my, I would, I think it's important to point out too, with all my conversations with staff and with department, excuse me, department heads, I have mentioned that we're looking at this year right now with the concept of the grid, but looking long-term through the salary survey and other conversations to see what we're going to end up doing and that the grid is part of that conversation. If it's something we want to continue as it's been used in the past or not.
Kevin, do you have an idea when that salary survey will actually be conducted?
So, um, Debbie and I talked about this a week ago. Debbie's trying to set up, um, on, uh, phone calls with the two vendors who responded to our, our request for proposals. Um, it wasn't a formal RFP, but we, it, it, the dollar amounts are, are less than the thresholds needed, but we did go through multiple vendors uh, to ask for a, a proposal on a bid. And, um, once we have a chance to talk through their, the, the scopes and their, their methodologies and how, cause we want to make sure we're getting the best, obviously, that we can, um, through this process. We'll be able to come, move forward with the, the vendor that we choose to, to do so. Um, and we'll, we'll move, you know, hopefully in the next come, the coming months, uh, through the process.
Okay, thank you. All right. Um, if there are no other questions, then I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I mentioned, I motioned to enter closed executive session in accordance with Mass General Law, 30A, section 21A, under exemption, three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If a, if, um, open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining and litigation position of the public body and the chair so declares, the board would not return, will not return to regular open session. And the subject of this particular uh, session would be the AF ASME negotiations as an update.
There a second?
Yes, a second.
Okay. Any discussion? We'll go into roll call. Marshall?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Dick?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
So that is unanimous. And, um, Dick, you'll end the videoing.
Yep.
Correct? Great.